This time I'd like to call the Wilmington Board of Selectmen meeting of Monday, March 23rd, 2015, to order. All members are present. I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd kindly ask if Selectmen shampoo can lead us in that effort. We can all rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I will have the transmitting of the Treasury warrants 38, 38A, 39, and 39A. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to the approval of the minutes for October 14th, 2014. Would anyone like to make a motion?
So moved.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Anything further? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to Communications, as we do not have any appointments scheduled for this evening, and at this time, I'd like to turn it over to the manager. Thank you.
Madam Chair, the first correspondence is a memo to the Board with regard to the high school project delay, and I'll just read this into the record. The opening of the new Wilmington High School on February 24, 2015, is a testament to the knowledge, abilities, and commitment of public officials and the project team to execute the directive of an overwhelming majority of Wilmington voters to provide students with a 21st century learning facility. It is truly unfortunate that in spite of the strong mandate for construction of a new high school, a few individuals were able to delay this project by seven months. For the graduating class of 2015, the delay represents a lost opportunity to experience the benefits of completing their entire final year of high school in an environment that provides flexible learning spaces, fully incorporates technology into the fabric of the facility, provides a gymnasium with elevated track, and a state-of-the-art auditorium. This unnecessary project delay has led to an increase of nearly 1.5 million in project costs. While the overall project cost remains within budget, the additional costs would not have been incurred had the project started according to the original project schedule. The attached email from Bill Cunniff, the owner's project manager, establishes the basis for the cost escalation associated with the project delay.
If I could just interject. I don't want to bang that drum again, but obviously because of the delays, I mean, we're not going to open up that old wound. I mean, obviously what those delays cost us 1.5 million. Luckily, it was within the budget to do it. And once again, we could've did a lot of things with 1.5 million. So be it. Time goes on, and we move forward.
Can I respond to that at all?
No.
Both of your representatives.
During public comments, you'll have an opportunity to speak.
The next under correspondence is a memorandum from Paul Looney, project or town engineer. This is regarding the Kinder Morgan Pipeline Project. Just to summarize, we met with representatives from Kinder Morgan back on February 23rd to review the route of the pipeline. John Gavin and Steve Keaty agreed to take back the proposed alternative route, which is to extend a portion of the pipeline along an existing electric utility corridor to avoid the proximity, close proximity to the drinking water wells. The new route would require going under the Benevento Quarry, which raised questions from the town representatives at that meeting as to whether this was feasible and safe. Kinder Morgan claims that they've performed similar work in other gas line projects, pipeline projects, and would provide us with information to that effect. We have requested that information and are awaiting that information at this point. The town also, as part of that meeting, requested that the remaining section that is still outside of the utility corridor be placed into the utility corridor, which the representatives from Kinder Morgan indicated that they would consider. Again, we're awaiting a response there. It is noteworthy that the revised map, a revised map was provided to the town that reflects the change in the pipeline running along the utility corridor, but the map that has been filed with FERC, which is the regulatory agency that oversees this project, that map, which was filed on March 13th, still has the original pipeline route. So we've made inquiries to Kinder Morgan as to why the, what I would deem the official route still remains the same. We will be continuing to follow up with Kinder Morgan and also having some conversations with council about our approach from here.
Jeff, this memorandum that you just read to us was from March 20th. As of today, we still haven't heard from Kinder Morgan confirming whether or not they've included the new map to FERC. We still don't know that, as of today?
Well, as of today, as of, as of the 13th of March, their latest filing with, with FERC has the original map, in spite of the fact that they've provided us with a revised map. So we're trying to get from them an answer as to why the official map, what I would deem the official map with FERC, has not changed to reflect what they've provided us. So we're awaiting a response.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Yes.
If I may, I just want to make sure that I fully understand what the town administration's position is, having a sense of where the Board's coming from, from previous meetings. So clearly, the administration and the town and this Board objects to Plan A, you know, that the existing route as it's contained in the paperwork, which is on file with FERC. We also object to Plan B, but I'm assuming if pressed between Plan A and Plan B, going through a resource area and through our neighborhoods versus going through the area beneath a quarry, I'm presuming that we need the information that they've indicated they have in order to, you know, decide which evil is worse. Is that-
I would say that's a fair statement. I think we have some serious questions about the safety of running a lateral gas pipeline under an active quarry. It seems just kind of intuitively to be problematic, but we will reserve judgment until we get additional information.
Great. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Our next under correspondence is a memorandum from Debbie Cipriani, the Recreation Director. You may recall about a year ago, a request was made about looking into paddleboard and kayaking programs. So Deb Cipriani began looking into this as a possible recreation program. At the time, it wasn't, the timing wasn't right in terms of being able to schedule anything for the summer of 14, but she's looked into a couple of different programs, and it looks like we'll be able to offer something for the upcoming season, 2015. There's an outfit called Still River Outfitters. They've provided recreation programs to a number of different towns, just to name a few. Hudson, Marlborough, Westboro, Sterling, Bolton, Bereka, Bedford, Carlisle, Tuxbury. So they're clearly involved in providing these types of programs in other communities. They're kayaking instructors, certified American Canoe Association, First Aid and CPR certified. And the plan would be to offer the programs in stand-up paddleboarding for adults, introduction to stand-up paddleboarding for youth ages 10 to 17, and then there's a number of other course classes also for the younger kids. And the plan is to look at offering this for the upcoming summer recreation season.
May I ask a question on that? Do you, two questions really. One is, I'm delighted, by the way, that the town is pursuing this. I was hopeful that something like this could materialize and complement the programs that are offered at the town beach through the summer. The question for you, Jeff, is about liability, where clearly it seems like they're going to be conducting this. I think it said it was going to launch from the fishing pier area, and so the folks on the paddleboards will be outside of the lines at the beach. How does the town handle liability insurance and that kind of stuff for this kind of an activity? Is there a precedent for that, or does the company come with their own sort of bonding? Or, I'm just curious about that.
Well, we would certainly expect them to provide a certificate of insurance. Also, there's certain waiver release forms that participants would have to sign as well. So we would certainly look to cover that.
And is there, how does the cost get handled? Do they charge by the hour, or is that still sort of going to be ironed out? Is there a cost to the town, or is there a revenue sharing to the town?
Well, it would be similar to the other programs that the recreation offers. There would be, typically, there's a charge that is paid by the recreation department, and then there's a slight markup on it, and then it's offered to residents.
Great. No, this is good. I'm glad, glad this came up. Thank you very much.
Next under correspondence is a correspondence from FEMA, Federal Emergency Management Agency, and this is with regard to a series, a scheduled meeting to evaluate the Charles Watershed, which is actually, if you look at the map that was provided, Wilmington, about probably 85 or 90 percent of Wilmington is within the Charles Watershed, all but the very upper northern sections of Wilmington and north, I guess would be northwesterly sections. So the, there's a series, a meeting that is, a series of meetings that is being offered. The intent is for FEMA to gather information, identify, assess, and reduce risks in the floodplain, and they will be looking for information from all of the affected communities. We have a representative attending the meeting on April 14th, which will be held at the Hamilton-Wenham Public Library, to provide information from Wilmington's perspective as to the potential impacts that this flood zone designation would have on, on the town. And so we've got an internal meeting that will be happening in the next week or so to, between the town engineer and Public Works Conservation, to take a look at the areas that are within this flood zone and prepare for that information with FEMA on Next, we have correspondence from the Massachusetts Municipal Association. Governor Baker has announced the provision of $30 million for pothole and winter recovery efforts, and as a result of the severe winter that we had, the governor has allotted this funding to cities and towns. He's using the Chapter 90 formula for a dispersment. It would be on a reimbursement basis, very similar to how Chapter 90 works. Wilmington, based upon this formula, would receive $113,604. The money would have to be spent by June 30th of 2015, and the intent is to really perform repairs to streets, some of the things that might be included, potholes, pavement cracking, surface defects, paving projects, guardrails, storm drains, line striping, and repair and replacement of damaged signs. I've asked Mike Woods, Public Works Director, to prepare for me a summary of the areas that we would be looking to target, and I'll be, have that for the Board at your next meeting.
Thank you. Moving on to the Board to Consider items, please.
First item under Board to Consider is the execution of the collective bargaining agreement between the town and the Wilmington, the New England Police Benevolent Association Local One, this is the Patrolman's Association. Their current contract expired as of July 1, 2014, so the terms of this new contract would be a two-year contract, beginning July 1, 2014, and running through June 30 of 2016. It's contract, the terms are very similar to the contract that the Board recently signed with the police superiors. It would be a 3% COLA effective 7-1, 2014, and then 3% effective 7-1, 2015. Changes to the detail rates, effective upon contract execution, $40 per hour, then going up to $41 an hour effective July 1, 2015, and $42 an hour effective January 1, 2016. Night shift differentials would change, going from the current 90 cents an hour to $1.10 effective 7-1, 2014, and 7.25 effective 7-1, 2015. And those are the principal changes to the collective bargaining agreement.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion to accept the bargaining agreement between the town and the NEPBA Local One Patrolman Union, effective for the period of July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2016?
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to accept the agreement between the town of Wilmington and the police union, as described by you and the town manager.
Okay. Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
I would just ask that the Board, after the meeting, just execute the, each of the Next under Board to Consider is the approval of the sale of town-owned land located on Marion Street. You may recall, last year, at the annual town meeting, there was a petition article seeking to purchase property off of Marion Street. The property was deemed surplus to the town's needs. The assessed value, as placed by the principal assessor, was $25,600. The property was then put out for public bid, and the successful bidder was Lee and Kelly Martinson. Their bid was $25,700. This is map four parcel 10, approximately 34,560 square feet of property. So the deed has been prepared, and so I would ask that the Board establish a motion to execute the deed for the conveyance of Marion Street property to the Martinsons, and also further to authorize me to execute the other closing documents on behalf of the Board of Selectmen.
Would anyone like to make a motion as described by the manager?
So moved.
Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Next is correspondence from the Wilmington Band Parents and Friends. The letter reads, "The Wilmington High School Band Parents would like to request use of the front of the Roman House for the Memorial Day Parade for our yearly fundraising activities. As you know, the parade is on May 25th, and we would like to be able to set up around 7:00 a.m. that morning. We'll be selling balloons, pom-poms, soda water, and popcorn, as we have in the past. Thank you for considering our request."
All positive recommendations on your end, Jeff, for that?
Yes, no, no problem.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion to grant that request?
I'll move to grant the request to the Wilmington High School Band Parents.
Okay. Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
The next item under Board to Consider is a request of Sharon Georgetown Clerk to appoint election workers for 2015. And she provides a full list of those individuals that she is seeking to have appointed. Do you want to have me, do you want me to read these into the record, or do you? There's probably about 25 or so names here.
From my standpoint, I don't, I don't have an issue with them not being read unless people feel that they want it written into the record.
I don't know. I don't think there's, we've ever really gone, we've had required before. Certainly, it's a public record. It's available if someone was interested.
Sure. Okay. So having said that, would anyone like to make a motion to grant this request?
Move. We grant the request as, as presented by the manager.
Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Unanimous. Thank you.
I hope they'll be very busy on Election Day.
Next is, under Board to Consider is a request for renewal of taxi cab license for Wilmington There was a letter submitted back on February 19th to Mr. Timothy Flynn, doing business as Wilmington Taxi, requesting that he provide the requisite information, also that he provide current driver, Massachusetts driver's licenses with applications, as well as a $50 renewal fee per vehicle, certificate of insurance for the vehicle, and $25 renewal fee per driver. The information has been provided. The police chief has reviewed the application and writes, "Upon review, the Wilmington Police Department recommends approval of both the 2015 application for the taxi cab owner's permit and the application for the taxi cab driver's permit requested by Timothy J. Flynn of Wilmington Taxi, 253 Woburn Street, Wilmington, Mass. A review of Mr. Flynn and the Wilmington Taxi has determined there is no evidence to hinder being granted the respective permits as requested." So there's actually two, two separate requests. One is the renewal of the taxi cab license for Wilmington Taxi, and then, second, the Board to Consider renewal of the taxi cab operator's license for Mr. Timothy J. Flynn.
Okay. This time, we'll take them up separately, if that's okay with everyone, as they are two separate Board to Consider items. So would anyone like to make a motion to grant the renewal for the taxi cab license for Wilmington Taxi?
So moved.
Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Taking the second one, would anyone like to make a motion to grant the renewal of the taxi cab operator's license for Timothy J. Flynn?
Move to grant the request of Timothy, Timothy Flynn for the operator's license.
Okay. Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Public comments. Okay. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
George Lee Fulton, across the street.
Yes.
I actually like to make a minor comment tonight, but if I can, I'd like to give you a package of information, and then maybe make a comment in a future day after I pass it out, just touch on what it is.
What is, what is this we're madding?
This is in regard to the building inspector and the town manager, and I talked about this before, and I think that the Board really should know what's going on, so I'd like to just hand you that to you. You don't mind. You can have one of those, Jeff, but-
Okay.
But we have it all, please. I guess there's two ladies from that yellow press here, but, you're from the past, right?
I'm from Wilson.
Wilson? Okay. Well, I'm sorry. I brought these two ladies because they're here. But essentially, my complaint is that through inaction of the building inspector, my property's been damaged and continues to be damaged. Commercial structure was built that was determined by Massachusetts Building Code to be deficient, and the PE examined it, and I have a lot of complaints in regards to that, and the fencing and the use, and a lot of issues, and a lot of that explained in that package, and I apologize that there's a lot of stuff there, but there's really probably three or four times that much information. And if you could take a few minutes and glance at it at some point, maybe in the future, I can make a comment on it and follow up on it. I am going to be going to court, and I am going to see damages from the town, but it may be able to be resolved, but right now, I'm being told that the problem is my animosity towards my neighbor, but in fact, I think it's the building inspector, and my neighbor's expressing animus towards me, not the other way around. And that's kind of documents a lot of the activity.
So have you had an appointment with the building inspector?
I've talked to him many times. There's really no point going down there. He lost to the Building Board of Appeals. He had a PE, how to generate plans. He issued, he allowed the approximately 24 by 52-foot structure to be built with no plans, and the Building Code of Appeals determined that a PE had to examine the structure. The PE did examine it. I thought that they would take it down, but in my opinion, in my attorney's opinion, it violates the zoning, whether it's commercial or not. I think it's a commercial building, and I'm going to go into that and prove that later on. I, I had thought originally that because it was structurally deficient, they were just taking it down, but they pushed forward, and they built the structure out there that, as I say, I don't think it complies with zoning, whether it's commercial or not. I think it's commercial. And I'll go into the details of that, and I am going to sue the town if we can't resolve it, so.
I appreciate, you know, I wanted to give you an opportunity to speak so that you feel that you were heard, but what I will say is that the building inspector is not here to represent-
I understand that.
So I'm just, just stating to you that I wanted to be fair to you, to give you an opportunity to speak, but it's certainly something that we would need to look into further, and wouldn't be able to provide any further comments.
I didn't intend to go into it any more than that. I just want to give you a thumbnail of what it is, and, you know, maybe we'll bring it up in the future, maybe we won't.
Okay.
If you indulge me a moment, second comment. I just, I would like to see a little more information on the high school thing. As you know, there were three appeals on that. It wasn't just one appeal. And the first appeal, the DEP upheld it, and the town was wrong, and the original engineer that, that put that together, I don't think followed through. There was a lot of subsurface infiltration structures that were changed during that process, and so it's not just a matter of seven disgruntled people and the town overwhelmingly voted. That was an environmentally based appeal, as far as I'm concerned. I can't speak for other people. That's what I was involved in that, and there's, it's still, it's not, not an appeal process moving forward, but there were other LSP aspects of ethics and environmental monitoring and other things moving forward that's still probably going to happen at some point, I don't know when, but if the town actually had, at the time of the appeal, through the first and the second appeal, had actually tried to work with the people, I think that a lot of that stuff wouldn't have happened. And I, and I, that's, that's why I think it's still unfair for you to just say, seven disgruntled people or 10 disgruntled people, and we could've saved this money, and, well, if you think about it, there is still a huge problem out there, whether you say it's a problem that's going to migrate or not, but there is a huge problem. If you, if in fact it was a million and a half dollars, if you had spent part of that and cleaned up just to source straight soils, that would've gone a long way to improving the value of the property and helping the environment, instead of just throwing the money away and dumping the town's chest and trying to beat up on people. And then you still keep doing it. Mr. McCoy mentioned not wanting to open a fresh wound, but then I can't speak for the third appeal, I wasn't part of that. I reluctantly was part of the second appeal, but a lot of structural engineering changes that were beneficial came about out of those appeals. It wasn't just a matter of people being disgruntled. A lot of things were changed in those designs that was very helpful to the environment. So I just, I really object to when you just say disgruntled people and the world, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't about that. Was I opposed to the high school as proposed? Yes. I think we could've done a lot better with something different, but that's not what that was about.
Can you point to the room?
And so I'm not going to keep bringing it up, but as I say, I do plan to follow through with an ethics complaint. I actually met with those LSPs per the, per the request of the applicant. I, the gentleman's name escapes me right now, but I met with him with my, with my family in the Panera Bread, and you're mainly an LSP for that meeting. Again, he's not here to defend himself, but he was a very rude individual, and I went to speak with them, you know, to talk about it, and they just told me, you know, there's, you know, you're, you're one person, you know, we're these companies, and we can do what we want, and there's nothing you can do about it. And that was, it was a pointless meeting. You know, so I'm just-
As you indicated, they're not here to represent the other side, so we'll leave it at that.
That's fine.
You made your point.
Last quick comment, thank you, appreciate that. Last quick comment, Kinder Morgan. Just, I think we're all on the same side in the Kinder Morgan thing. So, well, actually, I had another point, if you'll indulge me. Keep in mind that even though they came up with Plan B, they can still go back to Plan A or do something worse than Plan A. That's just all in the state, you know, so- That's just all in the state, you know. So I just wanted to throw that out there as a public comment. They can do anything that they want. That's all in the draft proposal stage. They can still do anything that they want. So don't trust those people. We shouldn't have left them out there to survey in the first place. Don't believe anything that they tell you. Take everything that they tell you with a grain of salt, that those big companies are not to be trusted.
Okay. Thank you.
Thirty-second, one comment. The oil and property for the Trans-Rail.
The Trans-Rail.
I think the town should seriously consider trying to purchase that property ourselves. Maybe make our own trash transfer station, maybe rent it out, maybe lease it, look at the environmental aspects of getting involved in it. That might be one way to solve that problem. I have to admit ignorance and not knowing what the value of the property is, but I think it should at least be looked at and given some serious consideration. It might make no sense. I'm not in position to make that comment, but rather than just having them impose something on us, it looks like we are going to go down on that one.
Okay.
If we can actually use that property for something that'll help, maybe we can move the DPW down there, move them out of where they're at, build a new facility for them in a few years.
Your comment's been noted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Kevin McDonald, 140 Yandova Street, Wilmington, Mass. I have a few issues tonight. As I go around town and I speak to various people, the feedback that I'm getting is that people are being crushed in taxes.
Kevin, tonight, you have your opinion on taxes. It's not relevant to any agenda item. Do you have a question specifically?
Yes, I do. Okay. I have a few issues pertaining to the school, okay? People were told that their taxes were only going to be increased above the equivalent of a cup of coffee a day.
Have you gone to the assessor's office and had this discussion?
Yes, I've had numerous conversations. What I'm trying to tell you is that people feel as though they've been deceived and tricked and lied to, and I think that's why they feel as though they're being crushed in taxes. I don't want to interrupt you, Mr. Newhouse. I would like to have the courtesy extended to the people of Wilmington, if you don't want to extend it to me.
Put up information.
Mr. Newhouse, I don't interrupt you, Mr. Newhouse.
Kevin, I'd just like to know what people? What people? Could you just, other than you, could you just tell us what people? Just give me one name.
Mr. Lingopata, have your taxes gone up a lot?
I don't agree with the way Kevin purports things, but my taxes have gone up a lot more than I'd like to. Yes, they did.
To move on.
And with regard to the high school, oil is there.
Okay. Move on from that. We've already had this conversation. Do you have a specific question?
Mr. Lingopata spoke about the environmental issue.
And we heard it. And we heard it, and we know you share the same opinion.
This is a different issue. This is about the stormwater drainage system that's being built at the high school. The oil is still there, okay? I want the public to know that when you deposit massive water into the ground adjacent to an area that has an oil spill, there's a high likelihood that that water is going to spread out, raise that oil up, and there's a chance that it could get pushed into the Ipswich River watershed, okay? And I think this board should really take a look at that proposed stormwater drainage system.
Okay. Your point's made. Move on from there, please.
Mr. Howell, the other night.
Please direct your questions and comments through me, please.
I'd like to ask this question to Mr. Shampoo, okay? Mr. Shampoo, the other night, I mentioned that I asked Mr. Howell a question. When you appropriate money for a town meeting article, and that money is in excess of what that particular item is costing, he stated that it goes into the general fund. I'm finding that there is massive amounts of money built up in the banks. We were told in December that the free cash was $14 million. I'm finding that we have over $50 million in the bank, and people are still being charged taxes. It's basically the type of thing where they're automatically raising the tax levy of the town 2.5% without any type of analysis.
Are you building to a question at some point?
Yes. The question is this, Mr. Shampoo. If the taxpayers of Wilmington have been lied to, if there's public corruption, are you willing to go to the state auditor and the inspector general and have town officials investigated?
Kevin, I'm going to rule your comment out of order. What you said was not accurate.
You want to get it and investigate it? Is that why it's out of order?
No. I'm ruling your comment out of order.
That's not a common question. You're covering so he doesn't have to.
No, I'm not covering. I'm not covering, but what you're saying is not accurate, and the fact that we have...
If they're being lied to, that the item is this amount of money, and it's like...
Kevin, that's your opinion. That's your opinion that you're being lied to. The fact that we have $14 million in reserves, if you take the budget, what's proposed, which is $100 million, which is on the table, and you divide that by 12, it's a simple math equation, it's about 8.33 million per month to run this town.
If I divide $100 million...
Basically, $14 million is about six weeks.
That's been $2 million per week.
Excuse me. You asked for an answer, and I'm giving it to you, but you're interrupting me. So you don't give people the same courtesy that you're asking for. I don't think there's anything wrong, in my professional opinion, that the town has six weeks of reserves, plus or minus, to run this town as a town enterprise. I don't have an issue with that as a selectman, and I'll stand by that.
Would it be fair to say that if you divide the $100 million of the budget divided by 52 weeks?
Let's move on from there. Let's move on from there. This is not going to be a platform for you.
You're interrupting me.
Because I'm the chair, and I have the right to do that, to keep you in line and keep you in order. I'm ruling your comments out of order. Do you have a question?
Yes, the question is this.
Save it for your debate. Save it for your debate. You made your points the other night.
The question?
I'm not making this for election platform.
You're going down as the most disrespectful, probably worst selectmen of all time in this town.
I thank you very much.
Zero leadership.
Your opinion is duly noted. You know, one thing I will say, you know, when I think of this phrase this week that I read, "A person never looks good when they attempt to try and make other people look bad."
And why you make people look bad?
You never look good when you try and make other people look bad.
Why do people say that I came and I qualified records when I have state-martined tax returns?
You're done for tonight.
I'm done?
You're done.
Okay. We'll switch people after the town voting calls have to say about that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. You're done. You're done. Please refrain from speaking. Please refrain from speaking.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Let's move on to new business and committee reports.
I have nothing.
I'm good, ma'am, Chair.
Kevin, please withdraw from the meeting.
You know...
For what purpose?
Please withdraw from the meeting.
Because she asked you to, Kevin.
I made...
I moved to recess for five minutes.
What's been made? Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Ayes.
Ayes. So we will call the meeting back to order. We were working on new business and committee reports. To my right, there weren't any over here to my left.
I just was, I just think it ironic that, given the circumstances, October 7th will be coming, I'm sorry, not October, April 7th will be coming up, and it will be a publicized debate between myself and that fine gentleman. So if you're looking for some entertainment on WCTV on the 7th, tune in.
Okay. I'd like to offer a committee update just on the Nine Cross project formerly known as Yentile Farm. I'd like to ask for the board's indulgence to read this press release that was released from the manager's office today. Jeff will be talking about this in important dates as well. The Yentile Farm Development Committee is inviting residents to a presentation of the Nine Cross Street Recreation Facility design on April 15, 2015, at 7:00 PM at the Wilmington Middle School Auditorium. The presentation is being made in advance of the upcoming town meeting, at which time approval for funding for the construction is being considered. The project has been designed to provide a welcoming and engaging space for all ages that offers a wide variety of active and passive uses and serves as a true destination among Wilmington's parks. The presentation will review the design at the schematic phase, including detailed visuals that portray the types of activities, structures, plantings, and amenities the space will have. The project is planned to include a multipurpose artificial turf field, a signature playground, basketball and street hockey courts, walking paths, an event green, a picnic pavilion, concessions building, and other amenities. The presentation will be led by the project engineers, and the engineering team is led by Green International, which includes Stan Tech, who is an international sports facility expert, and GEI, who is the town's geotechnical engineers. They are charged with bringing the concept design developed in 2014 through to construction bid documents and permitting. The project design has emerged from a very active public process, which includes three public workshops attended by over 100 residents, two surveys with a combined 1,950 responses, and nine committee meetings. Obviously, you all know the history of how the committee was formed, and what I would kindly ask as fellow members of the Board of Selectmen, if you can join on April 15th, we'd love to have you there for your support, and if you can please spread the word through your personal and professional means throughout town to advocate for attendance. We will be going before town meeting, as you know, on May 2nd for the $4.5 million appropriation. And just as a friendly reminder to all of you, we do have a fundraising subcommittee of about four or five people that have taken on the ambitious task of trying to raise $1 million towards that $4.5 million to help defray the costs. So certainly, they're excited about the work that's been done, and our next meeting is tomorrow night, which Jeff will reiterate in important dates. Thanks, Jeff.
If I may, ma'am Chair, I just want to state for the record that you're doing a wonderful job as Chair. The leadership you're showing with that committee and this committee is wonderful. It's top-notch. So I just want that in the record there, that some people can be extremely disrespectful, whether you're talking politics or town business. I think you're doing a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Moving on to important dates.
Important dates, April 4th is the Rabies Clinic Public Buildings Department, noon to 2:00. Also, on April 4th is the Easter Egg Hunt Town Common, 2:00 PM. April 6th is the last date of registered vote at the annual town elections for the, and then the town meeting, I'm sorry, the last date of registered vote for town elections. Town Clerk's office is open 8:30 AM to 8:00 PM on that evening. The next Board of Selectmen's meeting is April 13th here in Room 9, 7:00 PM. As previously noted, April 15th is the Yentile Farm Development Presentation over at the middle school at 7:00 PM. This will be a great opportunity to get some further detail on the elements of that project and how we envision it. April 25th, the town elections polls open at 8:00 AM and will close at 8:00 PM. And then, May 2nd is the annual town meeting at the high school in the new high school auditorium at 10:30 AM.
Okay. Thank you very much. Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
If I could, just if I could make one point, and that is, there was recently, this past week, an email that was circulated that seemed to have some misinformation about the status of the high school, in particular, the auditorium, and the suggestion in this email was that the auditorium was not complete, and I just wanted to make sure, because there were a number of people that I think received the email. The fact of the matter is that the auditorium has been complete and is functional. The auditorium is not being made available at this point for rentals because the staff is being trained on the use of the lighting, the sound system, the rigging, and all the various elements that go into a functioning auditorium. So just let me be clear, the auditorium has been completed as scheduled, and we will in fact be having, as previously noted, our annual town meeting there. So that's point number one. The other point that I think there was a misunderstanding about was the suggestion that the auditorium seating was less than we had in the old high school. The old school, the seating was approximately 420 seats. The seating that was originally established for this new high school was 641 seats, and that's all established based upon a formula that the MSBA uses. It's based upon the 2/3 of the total student population, which at the time was 960, so the number that was being used was 641. In fact, we were actually able to get additional seating, bringing the total up to 698, and then when you include available space for handicapped accessible seating, it brings
So, it was well done by all the administrators within the school, but also the students, and I wanted to at least acknowledge that that evening went off without a hitch, and the auditorium looked fantastic.
Thank you for that clarification and for those comments. Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Motion made. Do we have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Good night.